Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County Forum for candidates for Marysville City Council, Positions One, Two, and Four. I'm Vicki Roberts-Gassler, a member of the League. I will be moderating, and I will be joined later by Sue Renhardt, who will also ask some of the questions. Thank you for joining us. Let me provide some background on the position. The City Council is the legislative body of city government that establishes city policy and provides a framework for city administration to respond to community needs. Council members manage basic public services: sewer, water, fire, police, roads, parks, et cetera. They establish and enforce local laws affecting individuals and businesses, including local taxes, control how land can be used, and provide direction to the mayor. Candidates do not declare a political party preference. Candidates for Marysville City Council Position One are John Snow and Peter Condilius. Candidates for Marysville City Council Position Two are Mark James and Chris Davis. Candidates for Marysville City Council Position Four are Michael A. Stevens and Lauren Tapp. It is the policy of the League to be nonpartisan. Therefore, we neither endorse nor oppose candidates or parties. The rules for participation in this forum were sent ahead of time to all candidates, and they have all agreed to follow them. I will pose the questions and will clearly state the amount of time allowed for each answer. We are using a countdown timer which is visible to all candidates, and time limits on answers will be strictly enforced. The order for responses for the first question will be: Mr. Snow, Mr. Condilius, then Mr. James, Mr. Davis, Mr. Stevens, and finally Ms. Tapp. I will then alternate pairs of candidates in the starting position to ensure a fair sequence, reversing the order with each question. Let's begin. Candidates will have 90 seconds to respond to this first question. Candidate Snow, the question is: What are your top priorities for this office? Please explain why you are focusing on these priorities.
My top priorities are affordability, accountability, and livability. Marysville families are stretched thin with rising costs, and the City Council could do more to ease that burden, from lowering fees for our small businesses to protecting affordable housing. In terms of accountability, people need to trust that their representatives are transparent and responsive, not just serving special interests or going along to get along. Something as simple as a vote to add issues brought up from public comments at council meetings to the agenda for the council's public work sessions would mean a great deal. Finally, livability is making sure that our roads, parks, and public safety systems actually follow the path of responsible growth. These priorities matter because they aren't some abstract concepts. They affect every household budget, every small business decision, and every kid growing up here in our community. By keeping the focus on people instead of politics or bullet points to claim on the next reelection campaign, we can ensure Marysville is a place where our working families don't just get by, they get ahead, and they thrive.
Thank you. Mr. Condilius?
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. My name is Peter Condilius. I'm running for Marysville City Council, Position One. I've been on the City Council since July of 2022, and I was reelected in November of 2023. Before my time on council, I served on the Community Development Block Grant Committee. I was on the Mayor's Growth Task Force, and I chaired the Snohomish County Policy Advisory Board. My priorities during my time on council and for this campaign remain the same: public safety, financial stewardship, and community beautification. I think that the cornerstone of any good community is feeling safe in that community, and if our residents don't feel safe, we need to work to ensure that they do feel safe. I'm really proud of the investments we've made to our city budget in our police department to make their jobs safer for officers and for the community. Financially, our city is in a really good position. We have not had to raise property taxes the last 14 years. During my time on council, I was able to vote on two biannual budgets that did not raise taxes. And then finally, community beautification. Nobody wants to live in an ugly city. I think that's pretty obvious, but we've made investments in community beautification over the last few years. One that I'll talk about is the Signal Box Wrap Program. We've been able to get around 15 signal boxes wrapped with different pretty pictures and pictures of historic Marysville to make our intersections look a little bit nicer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James?
There we go. Hi, I'm Mark James, and it's been my honor to serve on the Marysville City Council for the past eight years or so. My wife and I are both U.S. Army veterans. We've called Marysville home since 1990, raised our family here, built our business here, and care deeply about the community. I bring a practical, community-first approach to leadership, shaped by years of service, business ownership, and teamwork. I'm running for reelection because I want to keep Marysville safe, fiscally responsible, and a place that families are proud to call home. My top priorities are public safety, responsible budgeting, and protecting the quality of life that makes Marysville such a great place to live. Safety really is the foundation of a strong community. So, as we grow, we need to keep supporting our police, fire, and emergency services. Responsible budgeting matters because these are your tax dollars, and I believe in living within our means while investing wisely in things like roads and parks. And quality of life means keeping Marysville family-friendly. You know, the things that people care about day-to-day, like clean parks, less congestion, and thoughtful growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Chris Davis. I've been a youth and family support advocate and active volunteer in the Marysville community for the past 13 years. Lived here longer. My oldest just graduated from Gettrill High School. Let's see, top priorities. I gotta say that my top priorities were shaped a lot through my nonprofit work as an advocate and volunteering at the schools, working on school levy projects. A lot of the feedback was, you know, "We're getting priced out. We have these problems. There's no affordable housing." And it just got to the point where I decided to start advocating for affordable housing and infrastructure improvements to kind of make neighborhoods more walkable, things like that. And, you know, you can do a lot more of that on City Council. So, I'm focused on helping small businesses with health department issues, permitting, zoning, things like that, so that they can have and create livable wages in our community. And I want to support police officers with their mental health so that when they respond to a tough call, they have downtime and mental health supports so that when they go on their next dangerous call, they're doing it with a clear mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us here this evening. I've lived in Marysville for nearly 20 years, and my wife and I are raising our five children here. I've served on the council since 2010 and as council president since early last year, giving me over 14 years of hands-on experience balancing growth with fiscal discipline. My top priorities on the City Council are responsible growth and redevelopment, fiscal discipline, and supporting a strong local economy and quality of life. I've been working to guide growth responsibly, from championing our downtown revitalization to updating zoning and mental housing, to making sure infrastructure projects like roads, utilities, and parks are planned and funded ahead of demand. I've supported balanced budgets that protect core services. Just last year, we passed a $450 million budget without raising property taxes. That's the 13th year in a row. And I've pushed for policies that strengthen our economy, advocating for business-friendly practices, and helping secure millions in state and federal infrastructure investments so our city can grow without extra burdens on local taxpayers. By focusing on these areas, I'm making sure Marysville remains safe, affordable, and positioned for long-term success. Thank you again.
Thank you. Ms. Tapp?
Thank you also for letting us be here and supporting our democratic process. I have lived in Washington. I grew up here. I moved away. I've seen different ways cities have approached different problems. So, my approach really is being flexible and making sure that the entire community is included in the decisions that are made. My most important topics are housing, being flexible with that, listening to new ideas, finding out what options there are available for responsible growth, also encouraging responsible employers to come to Marysville and support our community with living wage jobs. And finally, in light of all the things that are happening now with strong community building, and again, having every voice heard in building the new Old Marysville. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go now to our second question, and this will be in all the subsequent questions will be 60 seconds. So, timer, can you adjust the clock, please? Thank you. This will begin, we will start with candidate Davis, and the question is: What qualifications and experience make you a good choice to address the priorities?
All right, thank you. First off, I was a submariner in the Navy, and like addressing problems head-on quickly and analytically is a priority. And I carried that through, you know, my work as a chef and community outreach advocate. I've ran levy campaigns for three years. I did security for Arlington Pride, you know, since its inception, acting as the street medic and onsite community outreach chaplain, you know, kind of diffusing the counter protesters there. So, I feel like I've been tossed in the dumpster fire a few times and proven myself there. But what always grounds me is that I'm not there alone. I'm always with my community and gaining strength and direction from them. So, I continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James?
So, I've served eight years on the City Council and on various committees during that time, like Finance, Fire, Government Affairs. So, I know how the city works and how to get things done, and that's important. I'm also a longtime business owner and a veteran, so I bring that practical experience, teamwork, and focus on results for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tapp?
I come from a background of heavily engaged, community-service family. My parents were heavily involved in their local community and political community. I also, I want to continue that tradition by helping out our Marysville community to be strong, future-focused, and also I have lived in lots of different places and have done lots of different jobs, so I know where people are coming from at different points in their life and how to listen carefully so that their voices can be heard and everyone has a place at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you. My qualifications line up directly with the priorities I've been advancing for Marysville. As I discussed earlier, I've served on the City Council since 2010, giving me a wealth of exposure and experience on various city and regional committees. Professionally, I'm a licensed architect and business owner, so I understand how development, infrastructure, and budgets come together in the real world. That background helps me evaluate projects with both the eye of a designer and the discipline of someone who's responsible for payroll and clients, you know, people's livelihoods. On the council, I'm proud of the work that we've done on our budget that kept our core services strong without raising property taxes. You'll probably hear me state that over and over again. It's really important. And I've been at the table for major infrastructure and revitalization efforts that position our city for state and federal funding. In short, I bring the leadership, technical expertise, and proven track record needed for Marysville to keep us safe, affordable, and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Condilius?
Thank you. So, on the volunteer side of my life, I serve as the president of the Marysville Historical Society. I've been in that role since 2022, and I've been on the board there since 2014. That's given me a real wealth of knowledge about where Marysville has been, the history of our city, the people who shaped it, the events that shaped it. And I think it's really important to understand where a place has been to plan where it goes next. Professionally, I serve as the vice president of a land use and economic development firm in Everett, and primarily, my role is on project feasibility and entitlement. So, I understand how to get projects from the idea portion to construction. I know the hurdles that it takes to get something permitted, to get something through the bureaucratic process. So, being able to bring that knowledge to the council really helps me understand how we can help projects move along and help businesses that want to locate or grow in Marysville.
Thank you very much. Mr. Snow?
During my 13 years in the Navy, I learned that true leadership was about ensuring mission success while taking care of the people you lead. From during, even during sequestration and shutdowns when budgets disappeared, I found ways to keep morale high, adapt to limited resources, and never let my sailors feel abandoned. I balance compassion with accountability, and when one of my sailors was on the brink of suicide, I was the first in their chain of command to not just listen, but to act against those who were persecuting them, and it saved their life. The commitment to service is why I'm running for City Council. I've overcome diversity to even serve my country in the first place as a gay man who enlisted during the Don't Ask, Don't Tell era. And I know what it means to walk the walk, such as when I stood on Boeing workers on the picket line last year, rather than just giving them my thoughts and prayers. That's the kind of proven principled leadership I'll bring to Marysville. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to the next question now, beginning with Mr. Stevens. Given competing and conflicting priorities, what factors will guide your finance and budgeting decisions?
Thank you. As a council member, I've always approached budgeting with the same discipline I use as a business owner and architect, balancing needs, costs, and long-term impact. For me, the guiding factors are fiscal responsibility, community priorities, and sustainability. That means starting with core services like public safety, roads, and housing, the things people rely on every day. I also weigh how each dollar leverages outside funding. Through our lobbying efforts, Marysville has already secured major state and federal investments which keep costs lower for our taxpayers while moving projects forward. At the end of the day, the test I apply is simple. Does this budget decision make it easier for families to live here and easier for businesses to thrive here? If the answer is no, then we need to go back to the drawing board and look at other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tapp?
I think that looking at budget decisions for a city are similar to a household. Sometimes, a lot of different factors have to be taken into consideration. Sometimes also, is it the change that needs to be made monetary? Or is it a procedural, an outlook change that needs to be made? Sometimes, it's good to have a sense of evaluating the current circumstance rather than just have it be, well, we have to deal with this problem, and look at and begin to look at something through a new light. And I think that's where the experience that I have with lots of different jobs and living in different places is really going to be a benefit to the city of Marysville because I have lots of ideas on how to serve the people of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Snow?
Budgeting is all about priorities. You can't just look at the numbers. I'll weigh every decision through a simple lens. Does it help families? Does it support small businesses? And does it strengthen our future as Marysville? That means cutting waste where it exists, but not cutting corners on essentials like public safety, infrastructure, and housing. We cannot afford to nickel-and-dime our way into decline. Investments should match our values, not just the loudest voices in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Condilius?
Thank you. I think that when it comes to budgeting and figuring out where your priorities lie, you have to go back to what are the basic functions of government? Public safety, utilities, transportation, you know, building roads. I think those are really the core functions of government that in tight budget situations, we need to focus on. But I think I'll take that, the question, a step further and say that a lot of times it's when you have competing priorities, the default may be to raise taxes, and you have the option to take a tax increase to do an XYZ project. But understanding the negative consequences of taxes, because there are negative consequences, is really important and incumbent upon city leaders to understand, will the project have positive outcomes that can negate the negative impacts of taxes or vice versa? I think that's something that we really need to look at when talking, have this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James?
Thank you. Yeah, so financial decisions and budgeting, the budgeting process is complex for sure. But the answer to the question is actually straightforward, even simple. When it comes to budgeting, I stick to three simple principles: live within our means, focus on essentials like public safety and infrastructure, and respect taxpayer dollars. I look at it, every proposal through the lens of a long-term impact and community benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, coming from the nonprofit world and being a volunteer, you know, everything is a budget crisis. There's no money in nonprofits and volunteers. You're just dealing with sweat equity. So, I think that's kind of the driving goal here that we need to bring to city leadership, you know, not just living within our means because we're representing an entire city. And when, you know, grandparents are forced to vote against school levies because of the rising cost of rent and their social security isn't going up, I know that's not a city council solution, but we can do something to help. We can work with the nonprofits in the area. We can work with the local churches. We can build shelters and tiny homes and be there for our community. And that doesn't mean, you know, raising prices or taxes. It means digging in and listening to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Renhardt will be asking the next three questions.
Starting with candidate Condilius, what will you do to support a vibrant, vibrant economy in Marysville?
I think that the, each council member and each leader has their own set of background and experiences. I laid out mine earlier. My fellow candidates and council members laid out theirs. I think that bringing those experiences is very important, but understanding where we don't have experiences and where we need to learn things, and then listening to learn those things is very important. I told the story at the chamber meeting last week, and I'll tell it again. There was a business owner that wanted to develop a project here in Marysville in our downtown area. It fit right into our downtown master plan, but unfortunately, the zoning wasn't correct. So, that business owner came to me and some other council members, and we worked to change the city code so that their project could pencil out and that they could put it in Marysville, which goes, which is moving our downtown master plan forward. But we wouldn't have known that if we wouldn't have taken the meeting and picked up the phone. So, I think that's building the economy. It's about listening and showing up. Thank you.
Mr. Snow?
A strong economy starts with supporting the businesses we already have. That means reducing unnecessary fees, streamlining permits, and making sure small businesses get the same level of attention as the large developers. A healthy economy depends on money circulating here in Marysville and not draining out of it. That's why city projects should prioritize workforce training, apprenticeships, and local spending, such as ensuring project labor agreements with local unions to connect our residents to good-paying jobs. Finally, investing in infrastructure like reliable roads, stronger access for communities, and emergency vehicles, as well as municipal broadband, will help make Marysville more attractive for both employers and our families. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, well, I hate to step on Mr. Snow's toes there, but everything he said, like, we need to dig in and just get the work. Supporting a vibrant economy means adapting to the economy that we're in. And I love the small-town values of Marysville. I want to fight to keep those. But we also have areas where we can improve. We can improve in traffic safety for sure, but on the business side, like leaning in on those local businesses that have been struggling, the ones that opened up in COVID, and they've been churning away ever since, like, they need as much love as Amazon or Walmart. And not to say, you know, push out big, excuse me, not to say push out big business, but we need to like hold and hug our local businesses, nurture them.
Mr. James?
I can feel the love. So, as a small business owner here myself for 22 years, but supporting our local economy means backing the businesses that are already here, obviously, and making smart investments that bring good jobs. Infrastructure is a big part of that, and so is keeping regulations fair and importantly predictable. As a business owner myself, like I said, 22 years here in Marysville, I know how important a healthy business climate is for families and the community. And when I started eight years ago, Marysville was not known, well-known, as a small-business-friendly climate. And I've worked hard to help change that reputation, and I have been successful. I can say all of my clients are small-business owners, and I hear positive feedback quite often from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tapp?
So, when I look at the word vibrant, I think, okay, does that mean a strong economy? Does that mean a strong engagement with the community? But what I think for Marysville, vibrant would mean adapting to 21st century outlook on community. The downtown area could be looked at as a center of the bigger community rather than a side trip that somebody needs to go downtown. It could be someplace that people gather, spend time together, learn new things. But also, as everyone's been talking about, supporting small businesses is really important. I own a small business myself, and it's vital that the council support the small businesses, but also attracting responsible, livable-wage, large employers. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you. Supporting a vibrant economy in Marysville starts with creating the conditions where both families and businesses can succeed. On the council, I support streamlining permitting and making it easier for small businesses to open their doors. I'll continue pushing for those efficiencies so growth doesn't get bogged down in red tape. We're also investing in infrastructure, roads, utilities, and transportation because businesses can't thrive without strong foundations. And I've supported strategic partnerships with state and federal agencies to bring those dollars home, keeping costs low for our local taxpayers. At the same time, I love the vibrancy and potential in our downtown, and I want it to remain the heart of our community. By encouraging redevelopment, cultural events, and safe, walkable spaces, we make Marysville a destination where people will want to live, shop, work, and play. For me, a vibrant economy isn't just numbers on a chart. It's about opportunity, quality of life, and ensuring Marysville continues to be a place where the next generation wants to build their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Beginning with Mr. James, what measures, if any, would you support or propose to keep housing options affordable in Marysville?
Thank you. Yeah, good question and one that's asked often. Housing is a challenge everywhere, and Marysville's no exception. I support balanced solutions like updating zoning to allow more mental housing options, encouraging responsible multifamily projects, and working with builders to create homes that people can actually afford without overwhelming our existing neighborhoods. Small planning is key when working, smart planning, excuse me, is key when working toward these goals.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, Marysville, you know, credit where credit is due. Marysville recently passed an ordinance allowing accessory allowing accessory dwelling units in the city, which is great. But it came on the heels of House Bill, Bill one, three, three, seven. Like that was a statewide lobbying and advocacy effort that got that pushed through. And I'm pleased that Marysville has, uh, you know, adopted that ordinance or ordinance is similar. But, you know, it shouldn't take everyone in the state going to Olympia to address issues locally. Like, we're representative of the community. We're in the community. We're already talking to the community. We just need to listen to their suggestions and move forward with them. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. Uh, housing affordability is something we are actively working on in Marysville. As a council, we've already adopted interim ordinances to comply with the state's middle housing law, which allows more housing choices like duplexes, townhomes and cottage housing. We're making sure those updates fit our neighborhoods while still expanding the supply. We've also advanced policies to make accessory dwelling units easier to build and giving families more options for rental income or multi-generational living. The city's multifamily housing tax exemption program is encouraging developers to include affordable units in new projects. Importantly, we are focusing growth along transit corridors, especially with the upcoming community transit swift gold line, bus rapid transit on State Avenue. This project will connect Marysville to Everett and Arlington with fast, reliable service and we're aligning our zoning and infrastructure investments around these stations. That, that means creating walkable mixed-use neighborhoods where housing can thrive without adding more congestion. Thank you.
Ms. Tap.
I think that what we need to do is start looking at the facts of homeownership and the data that shows, um, why families are not able to afford homes. When there's a, a short supply of housing, we need to look at why there is a short, uh, shortness. I'm so sorry. Shortage of housing. Um, when people own eleven homes, that gives a bit more of a challenge for an average family to be able to find and live in a home. A house honestly should be a home, not an investment. It is over the long run, but for our children, for our future workers, we need to look at, um, not just expanding the housing market, but looking at where the shortage is occurring. Thank you.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you. Housing affordability is one of Marysville's biggest challenges. I support responsible growth that includes safe, walkable and mixed-use developments to give families real options. We should also create incentives for builders to include genuinely affordable units in their new projects, not just luxury housing with a token affordable label. At the same time, the city has to guard against predatory practices that push longtime residents out of their neighborhoods. Marysville has always taken pride in being the biggest small town, but we need to protect that spirit by ensuring families can afford to raise their, their kids here and even seniors can retire here without being priced out of the community that they helped to build. Thank you.
Mr. Condilius.
Thank you. So like I mentioned earlier, my day job is in, um, land use and project feasibility. So I've worked um, in different jurisdictions to make these kinds of projects for affordable housing pencil and help them get into the communities. Um, something that we've done in Marysville that I'm really proud of is have a wide array of zoning. The ability for ADUs actually predates the, the, the state law. For example, where I live in downtown, this was zoned, um, middle housing well before the state mandated it. So in Marysville, we've taken steps, um, to, to, to encourage housing affordability and density. That's really paying off too. You'll notice up in Lakewood, we've got a lot of multifamily housing, townhomes, um, more starter home things that people my age can afford. Um, and with the zoning changes that we've done in the last few months, I think that there's going to be even more opportunities for that coming down the line.
Beginning with candidate Tap. What are your ideas for addressing infrastructure needs as your city works to comply with Growth Management Act requirements?
Well, I think what everybody's going to look at is, is State Street and, um, having to really muscle down and address that uh, issue for responsible growth. I've li- lived in communities where there was no infrastructure support. Um, and eventually the community starts to wither because people can't get to where they need to be. Uh, I would also encourage looking at public transportation, but including the community. Um, for example, having, uh, bus stops at like church parking lots where people can drive down to the parking lot, hop on the bus and get to where they need to go. But there are some difficult decisions that need to be made, um, but we have to make them soon. Thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. Marysville complies with the Growth Management Act by directing growth into designated urban areas and making sure infrastructure keeps pace with that development. Through our comprehensive plan, we identify where housing, jobs and services will go and we align that with investments in water, sewer, roads and transit. We've worked with Snoke County and our neighboring cities and the Tulalip tribes on regional planning. And locally, we've invested in transportation corridors and utility upgrades that support this managed growth. At the same time, we use impact fees so the growth helps pay for itself. To keep this work grounded in community input, the Mayor's Committee on Growth Management is an example of the city bringing residents and leaders together to evaluate challenges and solutions. My focus on council is to keep these plans updated and funded while continuing to pursue state and federal partnerships so that we can improve our infrastructure responsibility without placing an undue burden on our taxpayers. Thank you.
Mr. Condilius.
Thank you. I think that a large, a, a large part of this is prioritizing, um, what, what, what areas mean, um, improvement. Uh, State Avenue was mentioned. I'm really proud in last year, State Ave- State Avenue has opened five lanes in the entire corridor of the city. So now there's no more, um, bottlenecks throughout there. We've also got the new interchange that's about to open. These are different things that are going to help move, um, the additional traffic that we're going to have with our growth management. Numbers that we have to meet. The other thing that was alluded to is, um, development, paying for development. A lot of the streets and improvements and sidewalks and utility upgrades that we see, um, that go along with development are actually paid for by the developers that are putting in the new homes and businesses and things like that. So understanding that all that we can have these upgrades and have them paid for, um, by the developers is, 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 uh, is a good thing for the city and its residents that are currently living in Marysville.
Mr. Snow.
Would you mind repeating the question?
Yes. Uh, what are your ideas for addressing infrastructure needs as your city works to comply with Growth Management Act requirements?
Thank you. So the biggest thing is we need transparency in, uh, building costs. We need transparency in everything that happens with the government because no one will trust a government that they don't know what's happening behind the scenes. With that being said, we also need to make sure that we're not in putting more infrastructure in just because we want to check a list somewhere either, um, for ourselves, again, for the next election or checking a box for what Olympia is requiring us to do. Um, that also means going out, door knocking, talking to people in their residence. Uh, yes, we have some town halls at schools. We have, uh, some places people can come to, but there are times of the day that people can't see. We need to go out there and see what are the issues so we can actually go and make meaningful changes to fix them. Thank you.
Mr. James.
Thank you. Yeah, growth is coming whether we like it or not. So again, the key is to plan smart. We need to keep working with the state, developers and regional partners to fund the road and utility upgrades that are needed and make sure the infrastructure keeps pace with housing. That way, growth can happen in a way that supports families and preserves Marysville's quality of life at the same time. Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Uh, once again, I don't disagree with much that anyone else has said so far. Uh, Marysville's done a great job developing its long-term plan and sticking to it. Um, no complaints there. But again, from the, uh, you know, long-term plan, saying that will increase infrastructure before, and the interchange is amazing. And when it's finally open, it's going to be a game changer. So there is planning going on. But it's also one of those things like we're, we're doing pretty good with the Growth Management Act. And I think we need to lean in more with cooperation with the sovereign neighbors over in Tulalip, you know, put them in charge of creek restoration, you know, that type of thing. Work with them, like they, um, it's, it's just something that we can do that's a little bit like investing in covered bus stops, you know, little things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. And now, uh, Vicky Roberts-Gassler is going to give the final question. Actually, we have time for two more questions. So the next question, beginning with Mr. Snow, is what additional issues or information would you like to bring to the attention of your district?
Two issues that deserve more attention are the details within transportation and infrastructure, especially where they intersect with public safety. In some Marysville neighborhoods, traffic is so severe that even a minor medical emergency can become life-threatening because ambulances and fire trucks can't get in or out quickly enough. We also have communities without proper sewage flow into the main system, forcing raw sewage back up into homes and releasing toxic gases. These are problems that no city should tolerate, let alone one that prides itself on being a small town with a big heart. Relying on weekly pump trucks is nothing more than a costly Band-Aid and we need to work with regional partners to improve mobility and commit to permanent infrastructure fixes. Planning smart now means fewer emergencies and fewer wasted tax dollars later. Thank you.
Mr. Condilius.
There we go. Um, I'm, I'm going to bring up traffic and transportation as well. I think that we have a lot of momentum on a number of transportation projects in Marysville and the key piece is funding. Uh, these aren't cheap projects. I think the, the new interchange is proof of that. And it takes chipping away year after year to get money from Olympia and Washington DC. Uh, I like to say bring our tax dollars home. Um, and that is something that I think our city's been really good at. Um, one fifty-six, the interchange there is almost completely, well, the interchange is funded. The overcrossing for the rail portion is almost funded. We're going out for funding to widen eighty-eight to three lanes all the way down with curb gutter and sidewalk. So there's a lot of transportation projects that I think will be game changers for the city of Marysville. Um, and I'm really looking forward to continuing to work to get that money from Olympia and from Washington DC so that it's not costing us in Marysville, um, any more money than it needs to.
Thank you, Mr. James.
There we go.
Yes.
I'm, uh, I'm sensing a theme here and I'm going to not break that. So transportation is still a big issue, uh, for Marysville. Um, congestion affects families, businesses, emergency response. So I'll keep pushing for coordinated road improvements like we've seen and like, uh, Councilmember Condilius just said, uh, the first street bypass number one and the, and the, uh, the new exit ramp, ventrum ramp from, uh, I five tying into that. And so keep pushing for those coordinated road improvements and state partnerships, uh, and federal partnerships so that we can make travel through town safer, smoother. Don't know if it'll be faster, but safer and smoother. Um, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Um, yeah, transportation's been hit a lot. You know, I think there's a plan. It takes a lot of time and effort to build any kind of road whatsoever and you know, a lot of that is the state's responsibility or there's state funding available. So yeah, let's keep you know, finding the funding and ways to pay for things before we start the projects. But I feel like we could do a lot better job of communicating the progress and the plan to the community. I know having like, um, listening sessions and coffee chats, things like that. We're, we're hitting a segment, but I mean, how many people really show up to a coffee talk to talk about the city's long-term plan? You'll, you'll get a few dozen or maybe even a hundred, but it's still, you know, we have a population of over seventy thousand people. We need to be getting out there with this information and I think we're doing good, but we could do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to go a different direction here. Um, so as both a council member and in my professional role as an architect, I see every day how permitting and entitlement delays drive up costs for housing businesses and public projects. This makes all of those things more expensive. From the council side, I know Marysville does a great job being responsive, but we often are constrained by state mandate, mandated processes that are duplicative and unpredictable. From the architect's side, I watch clients lose time and money simply waiting in line for reviews that could be more efficient. At the state level, I'd like to see cleaner, clearer, standardized timelines for permitting so applicants can plan with confidence. We should also expand digital plan review systems and encourage collaboration between agencies rather than having applicants resubmit the same information to multiple entities. And for projects that already align with local comprehensive plans, the state should streamline or waive duplicative CIPA reviews. These changes don't mean lowering standards. They mean being smarter and more consistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tap.
I think there are two things that are, um, on everyone's mind, um, especially in our community. Preparing our next generation and supporting our youth, hoping that the city council can work with the school boards to promote a, um, our next voting population, our next group of citizens, um, and to address the homeless crisis that we see across the nation, but hopefully the city council can have a paradigm shift where it's not a homeless issue, but it's a human issue. Um, and being able to provide a balanced solution for the suffering basically that we see on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you. We've come to your final question. Please tell us something about your life experience that might surprise or intrigue voters. We begin with Mr. Davis.
Well, I think I went over most of the interesting parts in the intro question. I grew up in Naples, Italy, went to Penn and Tamar Elementary School, a DOD school, uh, kinda out there and then went to middle school in Agonya, Guam, and then hit stateside and almost immediately enlisted myself. So that's, you know, it's not very interesting, but I, I get around a lot. I do a lot of things. I'm, uh, medically retired, you know, the VA pays me to stay home. So I, I volunteer and, uh, play the harmonica, harmonica very badly. I'm obsessed with pinball. None of that's very interesting. So, yeah, thank you.
Mr. James.
Thank you. Yeah. So I had to dig back a little bit for something that people don't always know about me. When I was, um, when I was in the army, uh, as a medic, I earned the Army Expert Field Medical Badge, EFMB. Um, it's a tough one to get. Um, I, I've heard that it's, I haven't gone for the infantry badge because I wasn't in infantry, but I've heard it's as grueling as that, um, on the medical side. And so it took me three tries. There's a pass rate, uh, under twenty percent on this particular um, testing and, uh, it, it was tough. Uh, it took me three tries. So, um, that experience taught me perseverance, focus and teamwork. So those are skills that I've carried with me ever since and and use today to help in my role as council member.
Thank you, Ms. Tap.
I, uh, enjoy adventure and when I set my mind to something, I usually accomplish it. So just recently I completed um, a black belt in taekwondo and that's the second time I've received a black belt in taekwondo. But I also, um, I think the most exciting part was when I was, uh, working with the Navy College Office and got to go on the USS Abraham Lincoln down to San Diego. I think the most exciting part was when I was working with the Navy College Office and got to go on the USS Abraham Lincoln down to San Diego. So I think my adventuresome nature brings me into contact with a lot of different people that have amazing backgrounds, and I really enjoy finding out what the next adventure is going to be. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you. And we only can stay on Lauren's good side with those double black belts. For me, two experiences come to mind. In January of this year, I traveled with my middle son to Eswatini. It's a small country in Southern Africa with a mission organization. The heart of the work was helping rural communities become more self-sufficient. Beyond feeding programs and clean water projects, we helped to build facilities that support microbusinesses, which are small enterprises that give young people a way to support themselves after school. Seeing how a modest investment of time and resources can empower an entire community to break the cycle of poverty was a powerful lesson. Secondly, earlier in my own life, I attended the American Legion Boys State Program in West Virginia, which first sparked my interest in civic leadership. These two experiences, one as a young man and one as a father, really shaped my belief that leadership is about creating opportunity and building stronger communities here in Marysville and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Condilius.
Thank you. So I'm actually a trained historian. Before I got into land use as a career, I got a degree in history and public history, and public history is how history is studied outside of academia. So museums, historic sites, things like that. And there's really no jobs in that, I found out, but I still love history. And one of my COVID projects, I always wanted to write my own history blog. So during COVID, when I was stuck at home, I started doing that. And back then, I was able to do an article a month. Now I try to do an article a quarter, and about seventy-five percent of what I write about is Marysville history, which I really enjoy. So I wrote an article on the history of Asbury Field for the last quarter. I'm working on Mother Nature's Window for this one. But I've also branched out. I did a history of the mayor of Washington's first presidential election in eighteen ninety-two. And then I also did a two-part biography on the former Watkins County Sheriff from the nineteen twenties. So I love history, and I love being able to continue to serve our community through that.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
We're two history lovers. What might surprise people about me is that during my naval service, I wasn't just managing supply and logistics. I also served as a victim advocate for sailors who faced sexual harassment or sexual assault. That role demanded empathy, discretion, and the courage to challenge powerful voices up and down the chain of command. It fundamentally shaped how I understand leadership, not as just giving orders, but as protecting and empowering the people I swore to lead. That experience still drives me today, and it's why I step up whenever someone in my community needs help. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our questions. The League thanks these candidates for joining us and for running for office. We encourage our audience to explore additional information about these and all candidates. Recordings of all LEAK forums, those recorded for the primary and the general elections, are available on the League of Women Voters of Snohomish County website, on YouTube, and on podcast channels. Find links at L W V S N O H O dot org. If you prefer written responses, vote four one one dot org, sponsored by the League, is another good source of information. Ballots and your Snohomish County Voters pamphlet will be mailed starting October seventeenth. Election Day is Tuesday, November fourth. Please be a voter. Thank you to our LEAK candidate forum team and the Candidate Forum Coalition. Special thanks to David Dave Moon and the Sultan High School students at TurkPride.tv who made this production possible. And of course, thank all of you for joining us. This concludes our candidate forum.